Whatever swearing someone in, right?
You got my thanks, thank you.
Jeffrey Mail.
The attorney.
Everman?
You have an attorney, Kevin.
I certainly do.
What's that?
You don't have an attorney.
Yeah.
He, uh.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the village of Carpentersville. Regular board meeting, six P M. September second, twenty twenty five. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Trusty Abbott?
Here.
Trusty Frost?
Present.
Trusty Garcia?
Here.
Trusty Gupta?
Yeah.
Trusty Malone?
Here.
Trusty Meniscalco?
Here.
President Skilman.
Here. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
First.
Pastor Phil saying something. Where is he?
Oh, yeah.
Pastor Phil?
Pastor Phil, where you at? Yeah, why not? Now we all have to stand up again, right? Oh, we'll sit. Okay.
Let's bow and pray. Our God, we are grateful this evening for the business of this community being taken care of in such a good way. And Father, we pray to thank you for these firefighters who are visiting us from Mexico and pray for their safety, both here and when they return home. And for all of those firefighters who are here in the village, just keep them safe in the in as they do their duties. And Father, we pray for these three new officers as they come on board, that you would bless them, give them a long and good career where they make wise decisions and are able to do their job safely. And for all the other police officers that are in this room, we thank you for them and the job that they do and pray for their safety as well. Lord bless this village. Continue to keep it prosperous and 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 just in good hands. Amen. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you. Of course, the firemen too. We love you guys. Okay, thank you. Um. We have to open a call, public hearing to order. I need a roll call, please. For the declaration of a quorum.
Trusty Abbott?
Here.
Trusty Frost?
Present.
Trusty Garcia?
Here.
Trusty Gupta?
Yeah.
Trusty Malone?
Here.
Trusty Meniscalco?
Here.
President Skilman.
Here. Thank you. Discussion on Huntley Road and Randall Road tax increment financial feasibility study and redevelopment plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I'm excited to introduce Anne Maroni from the Johnson Research Group. As you may recall, several or about a year ago, we've been working with several different developers on several vacant parcels of land. However, due to many site constraints associated with those properties, development on those parcels have been extremely difficult, if not economically unfeasible. So in order to address that issue, we did explore a number of alternate funding mechanisms to help incentivize development. Unfortunately, those alternatives were not well received by some of the taxing districts. So the board elected to go down the path of a tax increment financing district. In order to pursue that, back in March, you passed a resolution approving a service agreement for Johnson Research Group to conduct a feasibility and redevelopment study. That study is for an area that's roughly about a hundred and fifty acres in size that's bounded by Randall Road and Huntley Road. And tonight, Anne from J R Johnson Research Group will kind of go over the statutory requirements for the establishment of that TIF district. As part of the whole process, the village followed all the necessary publication and notification requirements. We presented the the plans to the Joint Review Board on July thirty first. And at that meeting, the Joint Review Board unanimously recommended that the project move forward, which is where we're at tonight. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce Anne Maroni from the Johnson Research Group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to be here. My name is Anne Maroni with Johnson Research Group. I'm the president and principal of the firm. And it's been a pleasure working with your team here. They really know their stuff. And I'm just happy to go over the technical requirements and the findings that we did as a result of our study. So if I get this right. Okay, so um on the agenda today is really to talk about the TIF project area so that we understand the boundaries and the details of it. Summary of the TIF eligibility that we found to be present in the project area. Discussion of the redevelopment plan, some of the key aspects and the budget, which is key for all of the goals and objectives that the village has for this area. And then lastly, the TIF designation schedule, which Matt kind of stole my thunder. We're almost there. We're at the public hearing stage. The next stage would be the adoption of the process. So without further ado, if I get this right. Oh. Um, so the the project is just about a hundred and fifty acres. And as Matt said, the northern boundary is the Village of Elgonquin. Southern boundary is right the intersection of Huntley and Randall. And then the eastern and western boundaries are those subdivisions. Erica Lane on the west and Westwood Avenue on the east. The area is broken down into a large vacant area. That's about a hundred and thirty two acres. That's in the light gray on the map that you can see there. And then the dark gray is the improved area. It's just a little piece of one parcel owned by Gage Farms. And that has a number of properties on it, including three buildings, three primary buildings, one farmhouse, one mobile home, and then one large actively used farm building. So as part of our study, we did a number of different studies, paper, field work. We worked with H R Green, the village's engineering firm, to investigate aspects of chronic flooding, which is the key eligibility factor that we're investigating here. We worked with data, historical data from Kane County Assessor and the Kane County Treasurer to understand the value of properties then and now. And then finally, we looked at the village's documents, key documents for planning, comprehensive plan, zoning, the design guidelines. Those are all key and incorporated into the redevelopment plan that we've prepared for you. So our eligibility findings for the vacant area. Not I'm not catching up with my slides. Sorry about that. So for the vacant area, we found that of the seven factors that are an option for vacant area, chronic flooding is present to a meaningful degree and reasonably distributed throughout the area. The map you see up here shows a hatched area on the vacant area where chronic flooding was found to be present. In addition to the finding of vacant area or vacant blighted criteria, the area has to be one annexed, which it has been. And if it has been farmed in the past, it has to be subdivided in accordance with the Plaid Act. And that was done all ahead of this process tonight. So we found with H R Green that over thirty acres of the project area or of the vacant area, forty four percent of it, is impacted by standing water, poor drainage and standing water and high water tables. So collectively, that is a very strong presence of chronic flooding. And then for the improved area is a little you can see the 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 aerial photo of the building of the property. The line kind of splits sort of right through this area because that's where the parcel crosses over with the Elgonquin municipal boundary. And we found that first of all, the improved area meets the age criteria. Fifty percent of those buildings must be thirty five years of age or older. All of those buildings are at least that old. In fact, the farmhouse was built in nineteen twenty one, so we hit that home a couple times over. And then in order to be a conservation area, you have to have three or more factors. We found that five were present, and you can see those up there. Deterioration, inadequate utilities, deteriorous land use or layout. We found that trucks, in addition to farm farming activity, trucks and truck storage happens and it comes in and out of this. Egress in the circulation with pedestrians and truck activity is poor is a is problematic from a couple different fronts. And then lack of community planning and declining or lagging E A V were also found to be present in the improved area. So all told, the area comment, the area qualifies as an improved conservation area and a vacant blighted area. So next we move on to the redevelopment plan. How are we? How do we envision this plan going forward? With the help of Matt and the team at the village, we've identified the area as a mixed-use development consistent with your comprehensive plan. We want it to be flexible for the uses that come down the pike and the conversations that you're having with developers. That includes commercial on Randall Road, if possible. Maybe some industrial behind that commercial and then allowing for residential that's coming through the area and has an interest in the area. As Matt described at the onset, the goals for the TIF money would be to extend key infrastructure to make sure that development is possible. Create opportunities for housing, housing options, and then again promote promote commercial commercial development and increase your employment opportunities. Now, in order to get all that done, we have to evaluate what the TIF increment will be generated by the potential development. So we've identified that over a hundred million would be available in increment. The base E A V today of all of these parcels, meaning the equalized assessed value of this of these collective parcels is just over seven hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. But after any number of industrial, residential, commercial scenarios of development happen, it could exceed two hundred and six million dollars in equalized assessed value. That is the dollar amount against which you would tax or levy your taxes. And then lastly, using the revenues from that increased equalized assessed value, we've identified a project budget. These line items are not set in stone. They're movable between line items. But the idea is they set a priority and you can kind of see the largest dollar amount line amount is the sixty million for public works and improvements. It sets the stage for sort of the priorities that you have for the project area. And that is kind of the summary of the eligibility findings and the redevelopment plan. I know that was kind of quick. And as we described at the onset, here we are at the public hearing stage to answer, ask questions, answer them, have any sort of discussion you want, and then your next action, if everything goes well, is to vote on it on September sixteenth. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, anyone? Thank you, Anne. Okay, next part of the public hearing is public comment. Anybody have any comment in the crowd regarding the TIF district? No? Okay. Thank you. A motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Trusty Garcia, second by Trusty Abbott, I believe.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Trusty Abbott?
Yes.
Trusty Frost?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Gupta?
Yes.
Trusty Malone?
Yes.
Trusty Meniscalco?
Yes.
President Skilman.
Yes, thank you. Public hearing is closed. Okay, moving right along. Chief. Recognition recognition of the Zacatecas firefighters.
Good evening, President Skilman, Manager Stewart, and the Board of Trustees. I would like to thank you for your time tonight and for your unwavering support for this exchange program that we are presenting on this evening. As you may recall, last year, Village President Skilman and local business owners, Mr. and Mrs. Rivera, organized this unique opportunity for both departments. For the first time since the inception of the Sister Cities Program, Carpenter'sville Fire Department was able to send two firefighters to Zacatecas, Mexico to conduct a series of specialized training sessions for their firefighters and emergency personnel. This collaboration aimed to enhance preparedness, improve firefighter techniques, and share valuable skills across the borders. The Sister Cities Program I spoke about recently is a partnership between two fire departments in different cities, often in different countries, to foster collaboration, exchange of best practices, and to strengthen relationships. These programs, part of the broader Sister Cities International Program, involve activities like joint training exercising, sharing of knowledge on techniques and equipment, and cultural exchanges. During the stay, firefighters work to strengthen their sister city by sharing programs that we each provide to our residents, resources that we have available, and training that we participate in to expand and improve each organization. The training sessions they participated in focused on advanced firefighting tactics, rescue and survival operations, first responder EMS care, and the use of our fire equipment used in the United States. As part of this exchange program, the Woodstock Fire Protection District and the Carpenter'sville Fire Departments have hosted four firefighters from Zacatecas. Two firefighters have stayed in Woodstock for the past week, and two have stayed in Carpenter'sville, and they will rotate at the end of the week. During the stay, the firefighters have practiced in several drills at each station and at Elgin Community College, where they conducted live burns and saw firsthand how we respond to internal structural firefighting. The goal is to allow our guests to observe and participate in daily operations of each organization and to get to feel comfortable with the firefighters in the U S. They also should gain training experience and strengthen the international fire service partnerships while they're here. The firefighters arrived in Illinois on August twenty fifth and will depart on September ninth, twenty twenty five. I want to also thank Deputy Chief Nieves, Deputy Chief Matt Hedges from Woodstock firefighter, fire department, who they're not able to be here tonight because of a structure fire that they responded to this evening. But I'd like to call Deputy Chief down with me here to present these awards to the four firefighters that have been here in the audience with us tonight. Deputy Chief Nieves organized from when the firefighters arrived, transportation back and forth from the airport, housing, food, trans translators for them while they were here, and they'll be accompanied throughout their stay here. So it was really a key part to this whole success of the of the program. So at this time, I'd like to recognize firefighter Godardo Aranda. Firefighter Juan Alanis. Firefighter Miguel Garcia. And firefighter Alvara Munoz.
Want to say it's really been an honor the last week or so getting everyone around and the camaraderie that I've seen here has been pretty humbling. And I'm just grateful for the opportunity. Thank you all.
Thank you. Chief Shaver. After swearing ends, and we're going to take a break, everyone, just so we'll get some pictures of everyone. And so just kind of sit tight, please.
Thank you, President Skilman, Village Board. Tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce three new police officers to the village who just graduated the Suburban Law Enforcement Police Academy after sixteen weeks of training. These three hires actually put us at full staff finally. So thank thank you, President Skilman, Village Board, for allowing us to continue hiring officers. First officer I want to introduce is Nathan Pezos. Officer Pezos graduated from the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy Academy on August twenty second. Nathan has a bachelor's degree from the University of Illinois Chicago, where he double majored in criminal law and justice and psychology.
Wow, nice.
Hi, Nathan Pezos.
Hi, Nathan Fazos.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the Village of Carpenter'sville?
And the ordinances of the Village of Carpenter'sville?
In the county of Kane?
In the county of Kane.
I will also abide by the rules and regulations?
I will also abide by the rules and regulations.
Of the Carpenter'sville Police Department?
Of the Carpenter'sville Police Department.
The orders and directions of the chief of the department?
The orders and directives of the chief of the department.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office?
Of the office of police.
Officer?
Officer.
According to the best of my ability.
Of course, to the best of my abilities.
Good job.
All right. All right. Yeah, Nate, yeah, introduce everyone, please.
So obviously, sitting right here is my mother, obviously my father, and then I have my two brothers, my girlfriend, and then that is that I got three of my cousins and my aunt.
Nice. Thank you. Where does Nathan reside from?
Sorry?
Where are you from? Yeah, where do you live now? Like Schaumburg?
Originally.
Schaumburg, okay, well, Saxon? Are you Schaumburg Saxon? Did you go to high school there? Hoffman?
Oh.
All right, all right.
Next one grew up in Carpenter'sville.
All right, let's hear that. Okay.
Next, I'd like to invite up Officer Jesus Ignacio.
All right.
Officer Ignacio grew up in Carpenter'sville. Again, he also graduated from the Police Academy on August twenty second. After six weeks, sixteen weeks of training, Officer Ignacio holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and is currently pursuing his M B A in accounting forensics.
Nice. Congrats.
Hi, Jesus Ignacio.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the ordinances of the Village of Carpenter'sville?
And the ordinances of the Village of Carpenter'sville?
In the county of Kane?
In the county of Kane.
I will also abide by the red rules and regulations?
I will also abide by the rules and regulations?
Of the Carpenter'sville Police Department?
Of the Carpenter'sville Police Department?
The orders and directives of the chief of the department?
The orders and directives of the chief of the department?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of police officer?
Of the office of police officer?
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right.
So right here this evening, I have my mother, my aunts, my siblings, my friends from high school, and my
Okay, next I'd like to invite up Officer Rosanna Missoula. And is also a graduate of the academy on August twenty second. She earned her bachelor's degree from Wisconsin Lutheran College. Rosanna was also the recipient of the Academic Achievement Award from the Police Academy, where she held the highest GPA at ninety six percent.
Wow.
Rosanna Missoula?
Hi, Rosanna Missoula.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the ordinances of the Village of Carpenter'sville?
And the ordinances of the Village of Carpenter'sville?
In the county of Kane?
In the county of Kane.
I will also abide?
I will also abide?
By the rules and regulations?
By the rules and regulations?
Of the Carpenter'sville Police Department?
Of the Carpenter'sville Police Department?
The orders and directives?
The orders and directives?
Of the chief of the department?
Of the chief of the department?
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office?
Of police officer?
Of police officer?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability. That was my mom, and then I have my siblings, my nona, my aunt, my uncle, brothers, family, friends, all sitting in the crowd.
All right, thank you. Okay, with that being said, thank you for everybody for coming out. We're going to take a short break, take some pictures. But I want to thank men and women of the Police Department, Fire Department, of course. You guys, it's been a busy summer and back in school, and we're back at it again, right? So you guys stay safe, please, from all the village board here. All right, and all right, let's take a break. Thanks.
Just got me now. Uh, Mr. President and trustees, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Chris Kias from the King County, District Twenty-three, county board member. Just got a few thing, a few things to update. Uh, actually, the first one is not really directly to the county, it's, uh, with the, uh, it's our Fox River Day, I'm with, uh, the Carpentersville Rotary, and we are going to be doing a cleanup, and I'll leave some flyers here on it. And it's also out on Facebook. Uh, we'll be meeting in the north parking lot, on the east side of the river at eight AM on the twentieth. For it's our Fox River Day, twenty-twenty-five, and we'll, uh, go till about ten AM. And, uh, thank you, uh, the villages for, uh, providing us with some help with that, uh, helping clean, take away the garbage, some bags and grabbers. And then, uh, we've, uh, we'll have coffee and donuts and.
Usually.
If you want to join us.
I usually Director Gray has a truck there, right?
Yep.
What time?
Really good, thank, yeah, they've been right on the spot.
They know, they get it, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, if you want to join in, uh, make sure you, uh, dress, dress appropriately. I'm not sure what the weather's gonna be like, hopefully it'll be good. Uh, this'll be a good chance to up, good opportunity to see what the river's like, uh, now that the dam's removed. Hopefully the water will be down, be able to get some really interesting items out of the river.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, uh, uh, other things are there are, our Kane County, uh, Government Guide has been, uh, uh, published and is now available online at the clerk's office, also hard copies at the Kane County's clerk's office. Uh, Kane County, uh, is still looking, the clerk is still looking for election judges, and I'll look a little information on that as well. That's a good way to support our elections, make sure that we, uh, get them carried off smoothly here. And then, uh, we are doing us, the, uh, Kane County's doing a shredding event, a fall, the fall event will be September twenty-seventh from eight AM to noon, again, at the, uh, five forty South Randall Road, uh, in St. Charles, uh, the Circuit Clerk's Office and the, and the Traffic Court. Uh, and there will be free confidential document shredding, and, uh, people can also bring, uh, uh, for recycling, clothing, textiles, home goods, bikes, and leftover paint for re- and recycling.
Yeah.
And last but not least, from the, uh, Forest Preserve, Kane County Forest Preserve, as I'm on both the Kane County Board and the Forest Preserve Board, uh, we're just inviting people to be aware again of our Adopt a Turtle program for the endangered, uh, Blandings Turtle, uh, program that we have, uh, you can adopt a turtle and actually name them, you don't get to take them home because they're endangered, but you do, uh, support in our reproduction, uh, efforts to, uh, improve the population. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak, and I'll just leave these with Karen, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Judges, so there's some information on judges, and also some flyers on the, it's our Fox River Day. Enjoy, hopefully be able to join us Rotary Club.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on, next item will be consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be acted by one motion, there'll be no separate discussion, unless a trustee so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from this general order of business and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
I'll motion. One second. I'll motion to approve the consent agenda items A through F as presented. One second.
Okay, we were motioned by trustee Garcia.
Don't do that to me again.
A second by trustee Gupta, a roll call, please.
Trustee Frost?
Present.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Gupta?
Yes.
Trustee Malone?
Yes.
Trustee Maniscalco?
Yes.
Trustee Abbott?
Yes.
President Skilman?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Next item, we have no old business tonight, correct? And new business, approval of resolution accepting a well inspection repair from Midwest Well Services Incorporated. Municipal well and pump for the rehabilitation of well number eight, accepting the base bid in the amount of one fifty-two, three oh eight twenty, and is also accepting supplemental unit prices as outlined within the bid schedule. Director Gray.
Yep. Uh, so the village owns, operates, and maintains four shallow wells, and we pull a pump every year or try to. Um, on the fifth year, we actually pull the waste tank pumps, that's actually the, uh, at the water facility. Um, so this year, we had three bidders, the second, the lowest bidder, um, did not meet our, um, responsible bidder ordinance, so we had to go with the, uh, the second is the, uh, responsible bidder, which is municipal well and pump, which, uh, was, uh, the same contractor that we used last year to pull our pumps, one of our, uh, one of our, uh, wells.
Where's Midwest out of again? I forget.
Uh, Wisconsin, I believe.
Wisconsin?
Yep. I think they're just right over the border.
Okay, do you have any questions for Director Gray? No? Yeah. Motion?
Go ahead. Motion to approve item A on the new business as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by trustee Garcia, a second by trustee Abbott, roll call, please.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Gupta?
Yes.
Trustee Malone?
Yes.
Trustee Maniscalco?
Yes.
Trustee Abbott?
Yes.
Trustee Frost?
Yes.
President Skilman?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Okay. Manager Stewart.
Thank you, President Skilman, Board of Trustees, uh, just, uh, to follow up on a couple of items, Public Works received the results from the two recent traffic calming studies, one on Wakefield, one on Tulsa, both had recommendations in favor of, uh, traffic calming measure. The Public Works team, Director Gray and Assistant Director Zabrowski, uh, put forward a recommendation that there be two sets of two-speed humps, not bumps, not tables, uh, to be placed along Wakefield, and two sets of two-speed humps to be placed on Tulsa Avenue. Uh, hopefully in the coming weeks, we are still reviewing pricing before, uh, we set that in motion, but the idea is that we'll, we'll hopefully get those installed, uh, certainly before, uh, the bad weather, uh, and hopefully sooner than that. Uh, please remember, there is the joint special meeting of the Village Board and the Audit and Finance Committee on Monday, September twenty-ninth at six PM, which will be at the Public Works Training Room. Also, we're continuing to schedule, uh, one-on-one or two-on-two meetings, uh, with any, uh, Village Board members who would just like to go over where we are with, uh, the revenue projections and, and such. I know we've, we've already scheduled a couple of meetings, so, uh, please reach out to, uh, Director Mason and myself, uh, to, to, to do that. Uh, development projects, we are still anticipating receiving revisions to the draft redevelopment agreement from Horizon this week. It is likely that the demolition of the Coles Building will begin in the next two weeks. Uh, we remain interested in discussing the location and surrounding areas in our jurisdiction with any interested developers. Uh, the proposed new TIF district, uh, based on, uh, tonight's hearing, uh, will proceed for presentment to the Village Board for formal adoption at the September sixteenth Village Board meeting. Uh, upcoming events, uh, please be aware, the Habitat for Humanity Northern Fox Valley is having its gala this Saturday, September sixth. Uh, Highland Lofts in Elgin, um, if anybody might be interested in attending, this is where they're actually auctioning off those sculptures, uh, that were paraded around the four communities, uh, earlier this summer. Uh, uh, September eleventh at eight thirty in the morning, we will be having our annual remembrance ceremony of nine eleven, uh, and that event will be at Station Ninety-One. Chief Anishevitz, are the, uh, flags up, uh, at Riverfront Park? Okay. So, in a couple of days, uh, we're gonna basically, uh, cover a lot of Riverfront Park with, um, you know, what will be small, uh, small flags. Uh, but think that'll be a nice, uh, a nice display when that's, uh, when that's ready to go. Was that on the fifth? Does that begin maybe? Okay.
The Lions Spring Road to the fire station.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, September thirteenth is the El Grito Parade and Festival. Uh, parade begins at eleven in the morning. Um, the festival itself will start, uh, at the conclusion of the parade around noon and run till ten PM. Uh, there is room to register both for parade entries, and it looks like we have at least, uh, a restaurant spot open too, if anybody might know anybody interested. Uh, Fall Fest will be the following Saturday, September twentieth, from ten AM through eleven PM. Uh, there will be a lot of great events, lumberjacks, uh, face painting, kids' activities, great food, even better music, as I understand.
Oh.
We have a lot of very involved, uh, board members and, and what will be actually live performance by at least one, right? Uh, so.
Some guest appearances.
Some guest appearances.
On drums.
Uh, oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, but no, it, it'll be a really good, I'm sorry, President.
Go ahead.
Oh. No, but it's a great, this is one of the best music lineups I think I've seen us have at a festival, and we've had some good ones. This is, this is a really good one, so, uh, please check it out. Uh, for those who have not already seen it, the print version of the Carpentersville Courier, uh, did come out last week, uh, is being mailed to all residents. Uh, if you've not already received it, you do have a copy on the dais with you. Uh, so thanks to, uh, Jen and, uh, everybody who helped put together, um, you know, the, the material for that. What's that?
Her daughter.
Oh, she might have helped too, yeah. I, I believe that. And just a note that I will be attending the Algonquin Lake and the Hills Fire Protection District, uh, fundraising event this Friday, so I will not be in the office. Assistant Manager Chone will be here, as will Assistant Manager Mason, uh, but.
Golf outing, that's right.
It's a golf outing, yeah. I haven't swung a club since my shoulder surgery, so it'll be fun.
I forgot.
But, uh, that is all.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone?
Yep.
No? Trustee Maniscalco, you ready?
Uh, yeah, you know, I don't have anything. Just want to congratulate the three officers.
Yes.
You hear word full force.
Thank you. Trustee Frost?
Uh, no report.
Trustee Gupta?
No.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes, I want to thank the Police Department for their quick response. Also, the, uh, Fire Department still has license conmemorative license plates available. Also, the Fire Department still has license conmemorative license plates available. Come on, guys, go pick them up, they're twenty dollars. And show your support and be proud of Carpenter'sville. Also, I assisted with Chief Anishevitz and Chief Shaver, assisted the Jets and Quadcom meeting. A real-time crime prevention program was presented, which I will forward all the information to you guys to look at. And that's it for me. Stay safe and be good.
Is this the real time you said, what's?
Real-time crime.
The drone?
It's the drone program.
The drone program? Just, just so you have an idea what might be coming your way. Exciting, not?
Or not.
Okay, Trustee Malone, sorry.
I have no report, excuse me.
Trustee Abbott?
Uh, yeah, I'll just say it's really great, congratulations to see three more officers for our village. Thanks, Chief Shaver. And I just want to say, I love the support that the Fire Department comes, like I always say, and the Police Department come to support of our people. I think that's fantastic, thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm here to support, yes. No, so seriously, thank you. Obviously, we had a, yeah, busy couple of weeks here. Everybody's doing good, I'm told, so everybody, keep our people in your prayers, right? So stay safe, and that's the main thing here. Of course, Public Works out there doing it every day. We love those guys, right? And police and fire, of course, so. Keep up the good work. We got a lot of events coming up, so it'll be interesting next couple of weeks, few weeks. And then getting ready for the winter. But thank you. Anybody have anything else? If not, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mean adjourn, thank you.